All right, I'd like to call to order the October 23rd, 2023, Mount Lake Terrace Planning Commission meeting to order. Would you please take the roll?
Chair Batista.
Here.
Vice Chair Harrison.
Here.
Commissioner Stenson.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Landis.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan. And Commissioner Betcher has asked to be excused for tonight.
All right. Why don't we go ahead and wait to do any kind of motions to do excuses till the end, see if anyone comes in late? All right, so go ahead to move on to item number three, approval of the October 9th, 2023 minutes. Does anybody have any changes or corrections? I am not hearing or seeing any, so we'll go ahead and declare those accepted as presented. Item number four, public comment. Is there anybody who would like to make a comment to the planning commission tonight for any item that is not currently on the agenda? I see we actually have some people in person tonight, which is always nice to see. Would any of you guys like to make any kind of comment?
Dale Jeremiah has signed up and is in the audience. If you please approach the podium, you will have three minutes to speak.
Oh, on top, okay. So it's not something not on the agenda, okay. How about online? Is there anybody online that wishes to?
There is no one currently in the public audience online.
All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to item number five, review of the draft tree ordinance.
Okay, great, thank you, commissioners. My name is Laura Reed. I'm the Stormwater Program Manager for the city, and I would like to talk to you about some upcoming proposed changes to the city's tree code. And I believe I'm sharing the screen now. You have a copy of the draft ordinance, and you may have questions about it. I am happy to answer questions as we go along, but just in the interest of efficiency, it might be good to have just clarifying questions while I'm doing the presentation, and then we get into the discussion at the end, however you'd like to go about it. But let me start here. The agenda for this presentation is just to discuss briefly the purpose, background, the content of the tree code update, some survey results on the tree, people's opinions about trees in the city, the schedule for the tree code ordinance, and the decision that I'm going to request, and then also questions and discussion at the end. I'd just like to briefly touch upon the fact, you know, touch upon why I'm here to talk to you about trees. Increasingly, there's a very strong connection being recognized between stormwater runoff and the presence of large mature trees. And this little infographic here kind of shows the difference in runoff with a pre-development condition, where there's, you know, a significant amount of abapwood transpiration and interception, to a situation where you have a completely hardscape environment, where you do have a lot of increased runoff. And then finally, the other option, which is a mixed situation of urban forest and development, which leads to a lessened amount of runoff. And runoff is where what I really do is I try to prevent polluted runoff in the city. So that's why I'm talking to you about trees, is because I feel like there's a good, strong connection there, and the more trees we have, the less polluted runoff we will also have in the city. I just wanted to address why it's necessary to update the tree code for the city. It was last substantially updated in 1995. This new code creates a heritage tree program, provides updates to definitions and some corrections of the old code, establishes new minimum tree retention standards, and improves tree protection standards. It increases the requirements for tree replacement, establishes a tree replacement fee and lieu program, sets up a tree fund, and then also covers violations, enforcement, and penalties. I'm here today to talk to you about the code, but I really feel like I am only part of a team, a couple of members who are here today. I'd just like to introduce Susan Kuhn, Interested Resident, and Audrey Meyer, Tree Board Participant, and overall Volunteer Extraordinaire. And another member, which is Matt Inaney from Sierra Designs, and Tim Seed, who is the Stormwater intern for the city and did a lot of research. This is a group that has been meeting twice a month at 8:00 a.m. on Thursdays since March to put together this tree code, and they have done a fantastic job, and I'm really proud of the result that I'm bringing to you today, which has really been tested in real time with a member of the development community to, you know, try to produce a balanced and fair approach. So in the start of this whole process, we wanted to look at what the tree code of neighboring communities could provide to Mount Lake Terrace, and what residents wanted to see. To this point, we have had a significant internal review of the code, and along with a lot of help from Chrissy Osborne in getting this through. We've had some public input from the Recreation and Parks Committee, the DEIC, a SEPER review has been completed, and a determination of nonsignificance has been determined. And I'm here today to talk to you as part of the planning commission, but the next few steps will be part of city council, public hearing, and then city council, public hearing. I wanted to just kind of go over in large brushstrokes the content of the tree code ordinance. The first step, the first component is the Heritage Tree Program, which is designed to protect large distinctive trees in the city, identifies criteria for selecting a heritage tree, establishes who can nominate a tree for heritage tree status, and then also covers the process elements such as appealing, applying, documenting, mapping, fees, maintenance, and then also how a heritage tree could be removed from that specific A lot of new terms were added as part of the new code, and then you can see some examples here. There was also a removal of the term "significant vegetation," which seems to be outdated. We're not really here to protect shrubs, but to protect trees in the city. Here's some changes that have to do with the tree retention components of the code. The tree retention percentage has been increased from 20% to 25%, and the minimum threshold of 10 significant trees has been removed. There are some exemptions for special situations such as restoration projects and for required frontage improvements. Incentives are provided to developers for higher levels of tree protection above the minimum, and the priority is placed upon tree retention and tree replacement. But if a tree retention goal cannot be met, there is an off-ramp which allows tree replacement and tree fee and lieu. One of the main things that was determined through analysis of other codes from surrounding communities was that there was some need for modernizing Mount Lake Terrace's tree protection standards, including the addition of critical root zone protections, protections for the roots of off-site trees next to development sites, upgraded tree protection zone language, and then, of course, retention of vegetation inside tree protection zones, and preventative measures such as the addition of chips and regular watering for retained trees so that they can remain healthy. With regard to replacement of significant trees, there was a modification to the number of trees required for replacement based on the size and the number of viable trees removed. And then the tree replacement fee and lieu is a dollar value for replacement, depending on the number of trees required to make up for a, say, larger tree that was removed. This is for trees that cannot be replaced on site, and I just also wanted to point out that there's an exemption for affordable housing. So this exemption is not an exemption from the tree protection standards, it's just if fee and lieu is opted for, it is not required for affordable housing. And the tree replacement fee was based on the wholesale cost for a two-inch caliber tree with tax, labor, watering, replacement cost for anticipated 20% street tree mortality is how this was calculated, and that is $759 per tree. The update also adds a tree fund, which is a pot of money that is from the sources described here, and could pay for tree vouchers for residents. In the city of Linwood, for example, since 2004, they've allowed, they've provided residents with a $300 to $500 voucher to purchase trees from local nurseries and plant them on their property. Arborist Services, for example, to assess trees that might be hazard trees in the street, in the street right-of-way. It would allow for more planting of trees on public property, including street trees and park trees, the acquiring of wooded areas for parks and open space, and more education and outreach on the benefits of trees to, you know, help people see why this is something that's important. The way this would be set up is that the city staff would manage the fund, and then oversight would be provided by the tree committee. This is the violation enforcement and penalty section, which was added at the request of our city lawyer. This would only apply in some, three very specific circumstances, one of which is a tree is cut down before a tree retention plan is approved during development, or if a development shows trees to be retained on a plan, and then they are cut down anyway, or if a heritage tree is cut down without being delisted. The fine is $1,500 per inch of diameter tree removed, so the larger the tree, the more the penalty. If it is not possible to tell the diameter of the tree that was removed, then there's just a flat $10,000 per tree removed fee. This may seem like a lot of money, but it's, there's two factors to consider, one of which is that the tree code committee felt strongly that it was important to have the penalty be more than the value of the lumber removed from the site, and that, you know, also this is not out of line with what other communities are requiring in terms of penalties for illegal tree cutting. That's the tree code update in a nutshell. I also just wanted to share with you some of the interesting information that we've gained through a five-question survey that we asked to people in the community. We got 186 respondents within the city, which we thought was quite good for a survey. Typically, they're not that, the response rate is not that good. We asked, in the first graph here, do you strongly disagree, disagree, neutral, agree, strongly agree that trees are important to the character of Mount Lake Terrace? There was a strong response on that, a positive response. And the next question is about more street trees, also a strong response. We had a question about whether people, this was an equity question, whether people felt that their neighborhood had fewer trees compared to other parts of Mount Lake Terrace. And that was interesting in that it's sort of a bell curve right there. And then this down here talks about how long somebody has lived in Mount Lake Terrace. It looks as though, you know, most of the respondents had been here for less than 15 years, but we did have quite a few folks who responded who had been here for longer than We also asked what should be a potential tree fund to be used for. Looks like the street tree question and the purchase of wooded areas for open space or parks was very popular, and then in decreasing popularity, you know, there was more tree maintenance, removal of hazard trees, free tree vouchers for residents to use, arborist consultations, and education and outreach on the benefits of trees. This is a little hard to read, the scale.
Try reading it on this.
Yeah, yeah, I know, not easy. But this kind of indicates the path that we needed to take in order to be here today to talk to you about this draft ordinance. So, you know, we, all these steps about to the end, middle of the page, have been completed, and now we're at the stage of presenting the draft ordinance to folks both externally and internally in terms of planning commission and city council. So the next steps would be to get your feedback, comments, questions on the draft tree ordinance, and if it seems as though it's appropriate to hold a public hearing for the planning commission on the 13th on this ordinance. And I'm here today to get your recommendation as to whether or not this tree code ordinance should be referred to city council for their review and public hearing. And that's all I have. What would you like to discuss or talk about with regard to the tree codes ordinance?
Does anybody have any questions for staff? Yeah?
Hey, thank you for the presentation. Can we talk a little bit more about the Heritage Tree Program? As you say, it's brand new. I don't have the code right in front of me, but I looked at it earlier.
Oh, sure. Are you, you just want sort of like more detail about?
Yeah, I think about that, and then you said that they have to nominate trees for the program, so, you know, maybe just a little bit more about kind of in theory how that would work, and then I guess there's still going to be trees out there that won't get nominated that would still meet the requirements, and how that's being accounted for?
Sure. The way that this one is set up is that anyone can nominate a tree on public property for heritage tree status, but the minimum criteria for a heritage tree is a 36-inch diameter tree at four and a half feet. So it's a big tree. And we're also looking for, you know, something that's sort of distinctive about the tree, whether there's a historical element, or whether it's a, you know, the tree is special in some way and deserving of protection. Once that occurs, that somebody wants to nominate the tree, then it would, they would, we would have an application here that you would, you know, fill out, and arborists would review and comment on the tree, and then the city would review it just to make sure that there's not some other public improvement that would be scheduled for that particular location, that kind of thing. And, I'm sorry, I don't know if I mentioned this, but did I tell you that on private property, only the property owner can nominate a tree?
Okay.
So I think I got a little bit off on the wrong track there, but that is the other important thing to note, is that nobody can go onto somebody else's property and say, "Your tree is a heritage tree, you can't cut it down." That has to come from the property owner.
Okay.
Yeah.
And as that property may change ownership over time, how will the tree remain protected?
Yes. The status of the heritage tree, once it goes through the process and is established, would be recorded on the platte or the title, other, you know, official documentation that runs with the property.
Awesome.
So, and then there would also be a plaque that would go with the tree so that people would know, "This is a heritage tree, you know, it has this status, it can't be cut down unless, you know, it is delisted." Yeah, and there's a process for that as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you for your presentation. I wanted to know, was there any sort of, any of the neighboring communities that have researched in this?
Yes.
Was there any sort of delineation between native trees, like local, northwest native tree, or just any type of tree?
For the Heritage Tree Program, or for, you know?
Oh, for the, like, for?
Replacement trees?
Yes.
Oh, okay, replacement trees, yes. Yes, the, one of the improvements is for the, you know, for this code is, and it's based on other cities. Example, is that it can be, replacement trees can be any tree that's not on the prohibited tree list that's mutually agreed upon, you know, for the city and things like that. So you can't put in a tree that is known to be weedy or excessively brittle and prone to drop branches on people, that kind of thing. But there's a pretty short list of prohibited trees that would be on that list, and anything else could be used, so that includes native trees. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure, there is a, there is a tree list that the city has had for several years, that's a, you know, approved and recommended tree list. But I think if somebody was to propose something, and it was a tree that was not prohibited and wasn't on the list, then that could be considered by planning department. Yeah.
So on that, to follow up, that must be talking about public property, because I have a pretty extensive backyard. If I was to take down a tree or put up a tree, who would know?
Yeah, this does not affect anything that goes on on private property, that it's not under, not being developed. Yeah.
Thank you for the presentation.
Yeah.
Got a question on the fines for illegally removing trees? Looked like the max was $10,000, is what I saw? The max fine was $10,000? Is that what the slides say?
The max? No, that's not the max, that would be if, it was, it was impossible to determine what the size of the tree that was removed. If the whole tree, including the stump, was removed, then this was just sort of the floor, but it could potentially be more than that.
Okay, so then if it was $1,500 an inch, right? So if some bad actor had a 30-inch tree, and they removed the stump, they're getting out of $20,000 plus in fine?
Well, typically, if the tree is part of development, proposed development, one of the things that's required by the planning department is an arborist report, and the arborist report includes what kind of tree, the diameter of the tree, some things about the health of the tree typically. So I don't think that this is, this scenario is likely to happen, because this is code that, you know, really affects what happens during development, not, you know, just sort of random tree development. I mean, I suppose you could do some detective work using Google Maps or something like a Street View or something like that, but I don't, I don't think it's likely that there's going to be too many of that kind of situation.
I would say with mapping, it's gonna, it's gonna get harder, and like Laura said, is it impossible it's gonna happen, that somebody does something that they shouldn't? No, that's why we have code enforcement, and, you know, we do the things that we do. But I would say it's probably less likely, because Laura said this is really about not on private property, per se, for you and your backyard, that's not this robust. We're kind of moving the tree protection forward in the city, but in order to have a full-fledged tree protection that, you know, has full-time staff with arborists, having been a part of a city that had a pretty robust tree protection program, we're starting with trying to protect trees in a development scenario. In our case, that's going to be quite a bit of trees, because we're so small, we're in an urban growth boundary, and there's going to be a lot of redevelopment in the city over the next several years. So instead of just wiping all the trees out, you know, trying to get ahead of that.
I would add, before I get into my questions too, with that redevelopment, I think we're gonna, you know, because we always talk about not only tree retention, but tree growth, but because we're trying to pack so much more onto, you know, the smaller lots, I think we're probably gonna end up seeing a more focus of trees in the right-of-way is moving forward is, you know, where we're gonna see a lot of addition to our vegetation cover to offset what we're losing on the private property, so. Ideally, we have both, but, you know, developers say, "Well, it won't pencil out otherwise."
It's definitely a balance, you know? We're gonna be faced with balancing increasing population, and that means increasing density housing-wise, and also protections for critical areas, including trees. So it's, you know, not a one-size-fits-all, it's definitely a balance, how we try to accomplish that the best way we can.
Yeah, I would just add that we're adding 100 street trees, starting planting today. Unfortunately, in application, it seems very difficult to find places to plant trees where they're not underground utilities.
And of course, we just are requiring everybody to underground your utilities now.
Yes, yes, it's a, it's a difficult sort of thread the needle kind of thing, but I do agree that we could use more street trees, and if we can find places to put them, we should put them in.
Okay, so I've got several questions, and some might be a little bit more technical and wonky. First, kind of simply, you touched on the heritage tree and how the tree also gets a plaque. Is the plaque required to be posted? I think, you know, in the front yard, it would, you know, be nice, people walking by, it's like, "Oh, look, that's a significant tree," and there's a little info plaque or something. But like, say the significant tree is in the backyard, no one's really gonna see the plaque.
True. I think the reason that the plaque was a requirement is you didn't, you wouldn't want somebody to not read their title information, just inherit a heritage tree and not know what it was.
Gotcha.
Maybe it could be put something that's like flush with the ground or whatever, but it's some way of sort of documenting so that somebody doesn't accidentally cut down a heritage tree and then get themselves a very big fine. That's what we're thinking about in terms of the plaque.
Would there be, I guess, how would the sort of enforcement of that occur? I mean, would the city actually go and want a spot check to make sure, "Hey, your tree was designated heritage tree 15 years ago, where's your plaque?"
Yes, I mean, I think that some kind of like monitoring over some time period is a good way to go. What we really need is an urban forestry plan, which I'm going to apply for a grant to get going, and I think that that would be part of it. I have also talked to code enforcement about this, you know, the enforcement part of this, and they seem to think that it's a fairly straightforward situation. I did adapt the code a little bit to make it easier for them to enforce it.
Okay. The sort of second question, I have so many, so they're bouncing in my head right now. I'm just kind of curious, I'm glad you had it on the slide about the significant vegetation being removed, because I did notice that a lot while looking at the code, it's like, "Oh, that's just stricken out, stricken out, stricken out." So can you kind of provide a little bit of historical context? You might not be able to, you know, from when this code was originally written in '95, I mean, because they use the term a lot, so maybe how, maybe the verbiage has changed, or if we were interested in trying to preserve vegetation as well, why aren't we still interested in preserving vegetation in addition to the trees?
I think the code is easiest to enforce when it's as clear as possible, and I think it's easier to grow bushes and plant, you know, shrubs and sort of things. They have a, they're quick, you know, they'll, they'll be the same size they were, you know, in 10 years, whereas a tree, if you remove a tree, then, you know, that thing has been growing for 70, 60 or 70 years, it's a much more significant change. So I think to make the code more clear, easier to enforce, and easier to explain, we had to get, we had to drop significant vegetation and just focus on tree retention.
Could it also be, I'm just thinking of a scenario, it's like, like where vegetation might be cleared out, might be more, you know, of an impervious service type of situations, like, "Hey, I had a bunch of hedges parked right next to my driveway, and I want to expand the driveway, and oh, I didn't get a permit for it either." So they wiped out that vegetation, and, but that would probably be covered under the [inaudible]. under the unpermitted driveway. Because that's, I mean, normally people aren't just ripping out bushes unless they're gonna want to do something with the space or if it's like an invasive.
Yeah, I would say most codes, I haven't seen where jurisdictions protect, like, vegetation in your yard. People rip out bushes and plant things and, and do that. And that would be really hard to enforce. I think one of the next steps would be is there's a greater concern about topsoil in protecting topsoil when people developed where it's not kind of scorched earth and you scrape all the good stuff off. And so that's something else development code-wise that we could do. And that's really where we're hoping to lean is protecting topsoil and then protecting substantial trees in the city. The rest is kind of, you know, I don't like the Oregon grape planted next to my house. I would rather have a rose garden or, you know, so be it vegetation-wise, right? It's kind of trying to get out what's important and what we can enforce. So.
Yeah, and this is, this code is completely about development, not about single-family homes. So anything that people do on single-family homes is not regulated through this code.
Yet.
But if, if, if it's not development-related, but the single-family residence wants to have the tree removed, they still need the permit, correct?
No.
Oh, no?
No. The only thing that would have touched private property is the establishment of a heritage tree designation. And then that has to be done by the property owner. So this is, this is entirely separate from anything that happens at single-family homes. This is only during the process of development.
Okay. And then I noticed that, that, again, with the terminology, the, the previous code listed arborist and at least one or two other type of tree-related professions. And that seemed to be struck out as just arborist now. Is that just, just like a more, the terminology has changed over the decades? Or no, we want a certified arborist, no kind of half-arborist or whatever? I don't know what the proper term, you know, I'm trying to find the, you know, in a hurry, trying to see where I saw that. But, you know, I just, arboriculturist, I think.
Yeah, there was something, I mean, arboriculturist, and I'm not actually sure what that is. I think maybe that's a term that has fallen out of favor. So we wanted to define more clearly, like, who is somebody who's qualified to make these kind of determinations for trees? And that, that is part of what the definition of a qualified arborist is.
Gotcha. Okay, so next question. I got a lot. The funding, you know, sort of the, you pay in the fees in lieu of, cover both vouchers to get trees, but also land acquisition. And I know land acqui, we've been talking about wanting to increase park space for years. But land acquisition is really expensive. You know, the vouchers for the tree replacement, you know, it's kind of a low-hanging fruit. My, my concern is, is that the, the funding to try and obtain more land, is that gonna have a secondary source of income as well? That might be a little bit more robust where, and so these fees can help just pay, you know, kind of the low-hanging fruit, you know, for the vouchers. You might see more of a immediate result with that versus having to sit in escrow for 30 years before you actually have enough money to buy a postage stamp chunk of land?
No, I mean, it's a really good question. I, I think this is an excellent topic that should be determined. You know, the use of the tree fund and the deposition of the tree fund and what, you know, how the money gets spent should be established in an urban forestry plan, which we're, we're gonna be creating. But you're right, you know, the, the sources of this, of the tree fund are fee-in lieu, penalties, grants and donations, which, you know, we've been fairly successful in getting grants to do things here. So I think that if we were able to get a large grant, that could be a source of money to buy, buy land. And then also other, other monies as determined by city council. So those are the sources that we've established for it.
Okay. And this might be another one chalked up under urban forestry plan. But, and I might use this reference a lot because I work there. So Seattle has, um, their utilities have to basically replace the trees that they cut down. City Light has to do a lot of vegetation trimming for their power lines. I think SPU has to do quite a considerable amount as well. And so what, over the years, what they've done is they, um, they have to replace those trees. But, so they either pay in or buy the trees themselves and then donate. I can't remember the specifics, but I, I think they just pay into the fund that helps do the trees. And then, um, ESTA will then offer free trees that can be planted in the right-of-way for people who want them. And it's basically, it's one city department basically paying for, this might be a bad word, the damage that they do, but to maintain their infrastructure.
To mitigate.
To mitigate, yes, thank you. They, uh, you know, it's just one city department mitigating to another city department. But then that city department then works with the public to help disperse that. Does, would something like that also exist with Mount Lake Terrace? Where Public Works or whoever has, you know, when they, when they have to do their normal maintenance to maintain the infrastructure, are they, do they have to mitigate those, those effects as well? Or is that separate and they, they just do what they do and it?
Well, currently, we have no funding source for new trees and for the ma, all-important maintenance and watering of the new trees in the summer after they've been planted. But with this, we should have that, you know, if that makes sense. Like, we're, this is building that kind of fund for street tree replacement and, you know, for the labor to plant the trees and the watering truck to go out and take care of them, that kind of thing.
Okay. Another kind of internal question, I was, because in, in the past, I've kind of wondered, why is, why is Parks dealing with this? Because, I mean, I get it, Parks land, but why is the Parks Planning Board on this as well? And, you know, reading through the code, I see that Parks actually maintains some, some of the public trees, but Public Works maintains other, like, streets are designated, so different departments are, are maintaining different streets? I was a little confused by that.
Yeah, um, I can explain why it's kind of confusing. In order to be designated as a Tree City USA, there was a certain body of code that needed to be written for tree management. And that included, that was solely about management of trees on public property. So that existed in Title 12 of the code. But in order to include heritage trees, which is, you know, a good fit for tree management, we needed to take it out of the public right-of-way section of the code and move it over to Title 16, which is environment. So what you're seeing is a lot of code that was recently passed for Tree City USA. It includes all those kind of designations of who does what. And then the addition is the heritage tree code. So this is a roadmap, a bit of a roadmap for the city to figure out who maintains and takes care of trees on public property, including Parks.
Okay.
I would say that you're correct in your assessment that there has not been clarity between what would typically be, public right-of-way would be Public Works and Parks, Parks would be the Parks Department. But, um, like Laura said, in the effort to become a Tree City USA and lack of designated staffing, it's kind of been not great, so to speak. And so this is trying to make it great, you know? Taking these steps for clarity, responsibility and getting a handle on preserving trees that we haven't had in the city, you know? Or is outdated, that needs to have fresh eyes on it. So I, I always say you gotta crawl before you walk, before you run. So it's just kind of incrementally doing those foundational steps that we need to build, to build on a tree program.
Gotcha. Like I said, I have, I, I kind of view everything through the lens of my job. So when I, when I saw that, I was just sort of scratching my head because I know Seattle, Parks just deals with Parks. It don't deal with anything else. SDCI, they deal with everything on the private property and I believe the heritage program that they're developing, they, they manage that as well. Everything else, everything in the right-of-way is ESTA.
Yeah.
So that's, so it's pretty, it's pretty clearly defined boundary. So anything that's, uh, on a street is right-of-way. So it all, it all falls under ESTA. It's not gonna fall under the park, uh, under Parks and it's not gonna fall under SDCI. So I guess I was, you know, I was a little confused when I was reading that and it sounds like, okay, it wasn't just me.
We're a small city. I used to work for SPU, so I know, like, the big city politics. We tend to like work together more than, rather than having like a us versus them sort of mentality. But so, yeah, so there's a lot of, maybe overlap. Yeah.
The, um, the survey question, uh, one of them, it was, it was kind of interesting. The, do you, you know, the one it was related to, how do you feel sort of the tree coverage in your neighborhood? Does your, do you feel your neighborhood has enough trees? And I thought that was interesting because most of the trees in any of the neighborhoods are on private property. So if you feel that your neighborhood doesn't have a lot of trees, it's, that's kind of what your neighbors have done over the years. It's not necessarily the city coming in and, and favoring one neighborhood or another. That's a little bit different if it's right-of-way trees, like, say there was a street improvement and now there's a planning strip and sidewalks and the street provided, or the city provided trees. That's, that's a little bit different, but just in overall terms, I thought, I thought that was kind of interesting that historically, the, the neighborhoods, if they lost a lot of trees during the development, over the decades now have come back is because the homeowners themselves have gone out of their way to do the planning. Or the developer planted the trees originally and now they're, you know, they're grown and mature. So I was just kind of curious that if there was kind of, from that survey, if you were able to glean, did, did, were people saying, "Hey, city, you're not doing enough for my neighborhood for trees?" Or was it just more, "Oh, just in general"?
I think we were interested in determining how people, how equitable people felt, felt they had access to trees in their neighborhood. You know, because we, there's a, there's a website called Tree, you know, Tree Equity, you know, USA that maps tree coverage along with some socioeconomic factors to determine how much equity there is. And, you know, I, I think of it as like access to the benefits of trees. But we were just, we were just kind of curious, like, how do you feel people feel about their access to trees in their neighborhood? And it seems like it's kind of a mix.
Would it be fair to say that in term, like, the, the thought of access to those trees is almost more access to the green space that the trees would inhabit? So like, access to parks?
It's a really good question. I don't know if we have enough information to be able to answer it. But I, I think that if we were to...
I know surveys are tough.
Yeah, if we were to look into it more deeply, I think maybe we would, you know, ask the question a little bit differently or maybe ask a few questions to try to get at some of the things you're talking about.
Okay. I had another question and I just lost it. Shoot. Oh, so this is in terms of just purely development, you know, for new development. But kind of going back to that question about what if it's like utility maintenance? So I can think of a very specific example of a tree that was probably planted when the house was built, so we're talking 60-plus years ago. But it was very close in proximity to the power pole. Now, you can't even see the power pole because that tree is so big and it's knocking out people's communication lines twice. It's getting, it's getting annoying. The tree is on, across the street, you know, it's on, you know, the neighbor's property. At some point, something's gonna have to be done to that tree. My guess is the way, the way that, the only way to mitigate the impact on that power pole is to probably cut it back so much that it's not gonna survive. You're, you're probably gonna have to cut that tree down. In cases of utility maintenance, then, would they be required to replant that tree? Or because it's such a big tree, it's like, "Okay, yeah, we get it. You gotta cut this tree down because it's gonna, it's impacting this, both, you know, power, cable, telephone. Too many impacts. It's gotta come down." Would they be required to replace that tree? One-for-one, 10-for-1? And then, and then who would, and if the answer is yes, is the onus then on the property owner or the utility company that had to cut it down?
Is this tree on private property or in the right-of-way?
It's, it's a good question.
Because it really matters in terms of, like, this code and city responsibility. Because like, as you say, like, just like ESTA is responsible for everything in the right-of-way, you know, the city's responsible for things in the right-of-way, but the property owner is responsible for their stuff on their private property.
It, it's, I honestly don't know. I, you know, just, when you see, when you see private, you know, property, you see, okay, the street, where the street pavement ends, most people assume that's where their property begins.
Right.
But there's that carryover. I don't know if, you know, where, where that is in, you know, in that, in that carryover, so. I just, I just throw that out as, you know, as an example because...
It's a good one. It's happened to me too.
I, I think, I think utility maintenance is probably where we're gonna see more impact, you know, probably a more frequent impact than we would with development.
Sure.
Potentially, maybe. It depends on what we're talking about, I guess, but...
I mean, it's, it's, it's a good question. And I think we, as, as we age as a city, you know, we have some aging green infrastructure in the form of mature trees. We don't want to have to cut down those trees unless we have to. But maybe more attention needs to be paid to, you know, is this a healthy tree? Is this a tree that's going to cause problems with the utilities? Typically, the utilities will hack at trees that are, you know, getting into their lines. And that's, you know, another question for tree planting is that we really don't want to have large trees under power lines and things, and communication lines and things like that. But my hope is that we have more resources at the city to try to make those determinations. Right now, we don't have like the, an, an arborist on staff, even a part-time one, to can, who can look at a tree and say, "This is what we think should, that should be done in order to preserve this tree." Or this tree is a hazard tree and needs to be come down and be replaced by other trees.
Gotcha. And like for Seattle, I mean, ESTA alone has its own, has a whole urban forestry division that, that deals with that. And I think, you know, obviously Parks has their own arborists and I know SDCI has their own inspectors that, that do that as well. But I think, you know, obviously, moving forward, the city can provide excellent guidance for new activity. But it's, it's all this sort of inherited activity from generations ago that we're, you know, that we're still gonna be having to deal with for, you know, for years to come. So I'm just, I just, I'm curious how that, in, I guess in terms of this and probably more broadly the urban forestry provision, you know, how, how we go about handling that aspect? Because I know that's gonna be, you know, that's an issue. That's, that's interesting. So, I don't know, that's, that was a lot of talking on my part. Did that bring up any other questions from, yeah, go ahead?
I'm just thinking back to your example of the tree next to the pole line. And, um, yeah, I think, right, it matters if it's on public or private right-of-way. But if it's on private, it wouldn't need a permit.
No.
So it wouldn't get replaced unless the utility's gonna do it, is what I think the answer would be.
Okay. And I know in, in emergency situations, utilities are gonna do what they're gonna do. So like, if it's a, if it's a safety hazard, they're just gonna go cut it. But normally, say if it's planned maintenance, utilities, they can just go do that. They don't even have to check with the city. Is that, is that correct? Okay. Maybe.
I don't.
That's what they do.
Okay. Like, uh, Christie, I don't know what they do. It's a good question.
Yeah, I would say we have less control, frankly. You know, Seattle kind of has each of their own departments and kind of rules of the road, but we're working with different utilities. And so there's kind of been a tradition of not asking or working together in some situations. So that's why you'll see stuff hacked off. And in some cases, you'll look at it and say, "That tree is not gonna live," you know? Because it just got beat up. So, yeah, that's, you know, other issues that we need to deal with, I think. And the city trying to plant more trees in the right-of-way. I mean, and development standards to plant trees with new development in the right-of-way. So, you know, we're working with newer regulations. If you think about the requirement for planting street trees with development, it's newer to the city. You know, those requirements didn't happen previously till the last few years. You know, those requirements didn't happen previously till the last few years and, um, having trees planted through the city first time. So, you know, we're, we're going to have, um, issues that we're going to need to address and think through as we move forward, for sure.
So with the, with the voucher program, it's, it's more, so when I, when I think of like, uh, and I know because I actually participated this in, in, in some of these years ago, when I was still in school, I, one of my classes, I had to, I volunteered for an organization that got absorbed into a different organization. But they organ, they organized planting parties on the city's behalf. So activities in the right-of-way. And so the trees were all donated and then just the, the, um, people who wanted to sign up, they just, on that day, it's like, here's your tree. They even went out and bored the hole for them to plant the tree. They didn't really have to do anything. They just said, yes, give me a tree. And they got a tree. They didn't have, you know, they could put some sweat equity into it, but they didn't have to. But it sounds like with the vouchers, like, the city will give them money to do it themselves. So it's not the...
It pays for the tree.
It pays for the tree.
Yeah, I mean, but you don't have any restrictions to have to plant it in the right-of-way. You can plant it anywhere you want on your private property. The benefit to the city, I think, is that we increase tree canopy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is something we've been talking about for quite a while now. With, with this voucher, then, is it, would it be restricted to certain, um, I don't know, like nurseries or certain locations that they can get the tree? Or is it just like a blank check and they can go and get their tree anywhere?
Um, I would probably pattern it on Linwood's experience, and I think they have a list of, um, local nurseries, not necessarily like Home Depot or Lowe's or whatever, but, you know, places that they know provide good tree stock. And those are the ones that are on the approved list.
Okay. And I think this question was maybe brought up a little bit earlier, but can you, can you speak to maybe any other things that you saw, other cities that were doing that we weren't doing, that now we're trying to incorporate into, into this plan?
Um, yeah, I mean, we have, you know, I have a, a spreadsheet that goes through and where we looked at like all, you know, we looked at, we looked at, um, you're, we looked at Briar, we looked at Kirkland, we looked at Edmonds and Shoreline and Lake Forest Park. Um, and used kind of those as our, our comparison cities. All these cities have a tree fund. We don't. We should be, you know, coming up to that standard. Um, and I think it was similar for other different parts of this, you know, critical root zones. What is the definition of a significant tree? I mean, there's certain, there's, there's, there's differentials, but everything we're proposing is not something that is like leading edge. It's more bringing Mount Lake Terrace up to the standard of our neighbors.
Gotcha. So, so it wasn't like the, you know, it wasn't so much that, oh, they have some, these new radical concepts that were just out of this world that were like, oh, wow! It was just more, it's like, no, this is kind of the industry standard and we're just getting it behind.
Yes, yes. That's, that's what we tried to adopt. And, you know, basically to, yeah, get to the point where, you know, almost everybody else uses critical root zone, we've, we're stuck on drip line, you know? So we need to kind of modernize to that standard, that kind of thing. That's an example.
Okay. I feel like I've done a lot of talking. Anybody else have any other questions? Comments?
With your permission, I just wanted to open it up to...
Oh, yeah. So normally we do the, we, we discuss and then we open it up for public comments. So if no one else has anything else, we can have whoever signed up and wanted to speak, they can come forward. We usually, we used to have like a station set up for them. Oh, up there. So, yeah, if you'd like to speak, just go ahead and go up to the, uh, little podium there.
You will have three minutes.
And then go ahead and state your name and address for the record as well.
Uh, just push the button and it should turn on.
A little red light will show up there if you, if it's working. There's on the base.
There might be a green light.
Oh, really?
Or it might need to be charged. Yeah.
Just tap it, see if it's on. Nope. Hold on.
Yeah, there you go.
Wow. How about that? Thank you. So, okay, my name is Dale Jeremiah and I live at 7106 230th Street Southwest in Mount Lake Terrace. And is it possible to pull the actual ordinance up that you're talking about?
Sure.
To page six?
Let me figure it out here. Just a second here.
Well, as, as we're looking, the, the issue of this is, has to do with the heritage tree program on private property. It's a volunteer program. If I don't want one, I don't have to get one. Uh, but when we pull that up to page six, and that's 16.030.070B5...
Sorry, yeah, I have it up, but I haven't shared.
That the property owner must record a notice of the face of the plat as a notice of title or on some other legal document that runs with the property indicating the status and location of the tree. So now, all you're establishing there is more government hoops to jump through, more red tape to try to get through. So I don't know how that's going to work on a property sold, it's going to show on the title that there's a heritage tree there. Well, now these people have to, they don't, maybe they don't want the heritage tree. Now they've got to jump through all these hoops, you know, I'm going to remodel my house, I need to take that tree down. I mean, you're interfering with private property. So just, if you're going to move on this tonight, please strike paragraph five. Just delete it. The next paragraph covers it, that a heritage tree will be cataloged by the city and there'll be a plaque. That's what Seattle does. They give you a certificate according to their website and a plaque, and you have to pay for it. So, but that's, that's just like a nightmare waiting to happen with that. If we could just take rid of, get rid of item five. Anyone that wants a heritage tree, they can say, yes, I've got one. It's so big, I can't get my arms around it, but don't make somebody... And then what's the county assessor going to do? Now they've got to have it on their tax records. Oh, little asterisk down here, it says heritage tree. And then the other comments about fines, so $1,500 an inch is $54,000 for a 36-inch Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify, this is not the public hearing tonight. Public hearing will be at the next Planning Commission. So just consideration of the comments tonight.
Would anybody else like to speak on this? No? No? Okay. That's all right. Okay, so, um, looks like staff's just looking for us, just, uh, a recommendation to bring this to a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So more of an informal, you know, we're not taking a vote, but it kind of sounds like everybody's comfortable with actually moving this forward to a public hearing? Okay. And that would be, uh, November? That soon?
November 13th.
Okay.
I believe, yeah.
Okay. And I think we might have only, maybe just one planning commissioner out on that, so, um, okay, so that sounds, that sounds good.
Okay.
And then maybe, um, the citizens' comment about the, uh, the tree. I, I know you covered that. It's basically just, you know, it's the homeowner that's, you know, is doing this in the first place? And it is possible for the trees to be delisted?
Yes, there is, um, right here is the process for removal of designation. Um, so heritage tree designation may be removed if retention of the tree would make reasonable use of the property allowed under current zoning impractical, tree interferes with the needed location of proposed improvements or structures, or the tree becomes hazardous and provides, poses a threat to health, safety, or welfare of the public.
Okay. So it's up to the homeowner to even nominate their tree in the first place and then they do decide to sell the property, then the new homeowner still has that option to delist, delist it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so it sounds like we're ready to move on to the next agenda item then.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And thank you. I always appreciate it. And you nailed through the comment.
Thank you, too.
All right, so item number six, director's report.
Um, let me move this back here. Sorry, I, I don't know if I've set you up for success there.
Okay. I don't need to do slide presentation.
Director's report is Zoom, apparently.
Yeah. I have only 60 slides this evening for you guys to see. Um, just wanted to kind of tell you what we're up to currently. So, um, for the comp plan update, um, we have a community visioning survey that's, um, been out and, um, we've tried to do a few things to get more input on that. So the survey runs to the end of October. We've had that translated as well into the six top languages in the city. Um, before it was in English and Spanish, so trying to expand, um, the folks that can participate in that, um, throughout the community. We've also done a concerted effort to get that, uh, survey mailed out to local groups more, um, than we had previously. So doing outreach to multifamily, um, management, um, groups, the schools, um, faith-based institutions, so some of the churches in town, various businesses. So continuing to, um, try to get the word out. And we're also in the process of updating a poster that is more general in nature that we'll be disseminating around the community with the QR code, just to kind of keep people like, hey, we've got a process going. Um, and then we've been trying to do a lot of outreach as well with social media, so making sure, um, I don't know if you folks are all, I know Danine is up on it. Um, I see her, which is cool. I, I appreciate that, getting the word out. Just if somebody's missed something, then we're continuing to get the word out, like, hey, you know, this is, um, something that's going on or you can comment on it. So I think that's very helpful. Um, also, um, this Wednesday evening is our comprehensive plan advisory group meeting. Our next meeting, um, is on Wednesday. And then we're, we're following that up with another meeting on, um, November 1st, which seems kind of crazy, but we're trying to change the calendar around so we can get the comp plan advisory group meeting followed by planning commission, so we can keep you guys informed about what's happening. And calendar-wise, that makes sense that way versus going the opposite direction, um, that we were doing. We're also having a public open house in this room on November 13th, um, where it's kind of a several-fold effort that we're trying to do. So we have an environmental impact statement, um, that's needing to get done. Uh, and there is public, what's called scoping, to get people's comments on what's contained in that environmental document. It's a big effort, but we need to do it for our update. It hasn't been done with the exception of Town Center in a number of years. So we'll be working on that, um, to get comment from the public. Those materials will also go on the website for, um, tracking what we're doing for the comp plan update. It will also include, um, information from Fear and Peers, who's doing the transportation planning, and they'll have a, there'll be multiple tables set up and opportunities to comment on different things by the public and then to ask questions by the different consultants and sub-consultants, as well as Leland Consulting Group, who's another sub, um, that will be providing, um, information on housing and economic development. And then we'll be interweaving equity questions and inclusion, um, throughout that tabling event. So quite a bit of, um, um, different topics going on there that we're working on for that November 13th. So that's going to be kind of seven o'clock, our first really big push public-wise, um, in a, in a bigger format.
I know you said, you said that the survey ends at the end of the month?
Yes.
And that the, it's now going to be in six languages, but I know...
It is currently.
It's currently. I haven't, but was it six languages from the beginning or was it just English and Spanish first?
English and Spanish first, and then we've increased it to include the top six languages in the city.
How long has the survey been available?
Um, I believe, Shannon, you can, um, correct me, but I think it's been up at least the last two weeks and it'll be up a couple more weeks.
Okay.
Um, the thought is, is that we want to, it, it won't be the last thing that people can comment and we will be, um, providing more inclusive opportunity for all segments of the population to be included. So this is something we'll be doing with translating other documents as well as we go along.
Okay, my, I was kind of getting, you know, where I was kind of thinking about is like, oh, if, you know, the English and Spanish versions were out like, you know, for...
Right.
Significantly longer, then that's not necessarily giving, you know, those other households that maybe don't speak those languages, an opportunity to, one, become aware of it and, two, feel even comfortable...
Right.
Surveying it, uh, you know, participating in the survey. So, um, I was just a little curious, you know, what, I guess the, the time difference between the two original translations versus everything else, you know, was it...
Right.
Were, are we, you know, were we only talking like days, weeks, or months, so?
Okay. Did you have a question? Okay. Um, so that's kind of those things. Um, and then we'll be giving an update to the Planning Commission in November as well, just, um, updating everyone on where we're at, what's going on with the comp plan update. And, um, we'll be giving an update to City Council in December. So touching base with Planning Commission once a month, in addition to the people that are on the advisory group, and then reaching out to council every two months. So effort is you're not seeing everything at the end. You're, you're getting information as we're moving through the process. So hopefully that will, um, be more inclusive as we, we go through the process, um, to next December. Um, also wanted to share that Chair Batista was at the State Planning Conference in Spokane a couple weeks ago with members of the staff. I was there, or two associate, or I shouldn't say two associates, one associate planner, Sarah Pizzo and our senior planner, Jonathan Morales, um, also went. That was the first time since I've been here that we took, um, people together to the State Planning Conference. So it's been a long time and it was, it was really good. Um, it was a nice opportunity. There's a lot of new state law, a lot of requirements under the Growth Management Act that have changed regarding housing, vans, affordable housing, emergency housing, equity and inclusion, uh, climate change. Um, so there's a lot of, uh, a lot of differences and it was good to hear from jurisdictions around the state about, um, some people that have gotten a jump on different things, how they, how they are doing it and what their experiences are. Um, so, um, I think it was well worth the time and opportunity for us to go hear, hear those and kind of, um, get re-energized about why we, why we do what we do as planners, um, when we kind of get in the weeds sometimes, to go see what, what, um, good things other folks are doing around the state, so. Um, and, uh, otherwise, we're, um, still working on the Primera Campus redevelopment currently, um, that's moving along. We have a street vacation cross, kitty corner across from the Transit Center, um, with a pre-app that's in for a fourth building at Terrace Station, um, being proposed. So we're reviewing the pre-application, um, materials now, uh, still working... Thank you.[8.79-10.16][S03] I just wanted to clarify, this is not the[10.86-12.06][S03] public hearing tonight.[12.09-14.29][S03] Public hearing will be at the next planning commission.[14.32-18.02][S03] So just consideration of the comments tonight.[20.66-22.02][S01] Would anybody else like to[23.62-24.32][S01] speak on this?[26.79-27.82][S01] No? No? Okay.[29.69-30.22][S01] That's all right.[32.19-34.13][S01] Okay, so it looks like staff's[34.76-39.76][S01] just looking for us, just a recommendation to bring this to a public hearing?[40.36-40.93][S03] Yes.[41.53-44.03][S01] Okay, so more of an informal,[44.33-45.53][S01] you know, we're not taking a vote.[45.56-49.13][S01] But it kind of sounds like everybody's comfortable with actually[49.73-51.06][S01] moving this forward to a public hearing?[52.16-52.73][S01] Okay.[53.83-56.96][S01] And that would be November? That soon?[56.99-58.06][S04] November 13th.[58.09-58.43][S01] Okay.[58.46-59.26][S04] I believe, yeah.[63.56-68.13][S01] And I think we might have only maybe just one planning commissioner out[68.26-73.86][S01] on that, so, okay, so that sounds, that sounds good.[75.89-83.86][S01] And then maybe the citizens' comment about the tree.[85.19-86.53][S01] I know you covered that.[87.36-90.26][S01] It's basically just, you know, it's the homeowner that's, you know,[91.06-93.33][S01] is doing this in the first place?[93.36-96.26][S01] And it is possible for the trees to be delisted?[96.53-102.36][S04] Yes, there is, right here is the process for removal of designation.[104.36-108.96][S04] So heritage tree designation may be removed if retention of the tree[109.00-111.66][S04] would make reasonable use of the property, allowed on the current zoning[111.69-115.19][S04] impractical, the tree interferes with the needed location of proposed[115.22-119.26][S04] improvements or structures, or the tree becomes hazardous and provides,[119.33-122.26][S04] poses a threat to health, safety, or welfare of the public.[122.36-122.86][S01] Okay.[122.89-126.06][S01] So it's up to the homeowner to even nominate their tree in the first place?[126.10-128.86][S01] And then they do decide to sell the property?[128.89-131.26][S01] Then the new homeowner still has that option to delist?[131.29-131.89][S04] Yes.[131.93-132.26][S01] Delist it?[132.29-132.56][S04] Yes.[133.46-133.86][S01] Thank you.[136.56-140.43][S01] All right, so it sounds like we're ready to move on to the next agenda item then.[140.46-141.19][S04] Okay.[141.22-141.69][S04] Okay.[141.73-143.06][S04] Thank you very much, I appreciate it.[143.10-146.36][S04] And thank you, so much appreciated.[146.96-147.76][S03] Thank you too.[148.63-151.43][S01] All right, so item number six, director's report.[155.96-157.36][S03] Sure.[160.26-162.06][S04] Sorry, I don't know if I've[162.36-163.86][S04] set you up for success there.[163.89-164.26][S03] You're fine.[164.30-164.33][S03] Okay.[164.36-167.13][S03] I don't need to do slide presentation.[167.69-169.69][S01] Director's report is Zoom, apparently.[169.73-170.13][S03] Yeah.[171.89-175.36][S03] I have only 60 slides this evening for you guys to see.[176.69-182.86][S03] Just wanted to kind of tell you what we're up to currently.[182.89-191.56][S03] So for the comp plan update, we have a community visioning survey[191.60-202.33][S03] that's been out, and we've tried to do a few things to get more input on that.[202.36-206.06][S03] So the survey runs to the end of October.[206.10-212.26][S03] We've had that translated as well into the six top languages in the city.[213.06-215.16][S03] Before, it was in English and Spanish.[215.20-222.36][S03] So trying to expand the folks that can participate in that throughout the community.[222.96-232.16][S03] We've also done a concerted effort to get that survey mailed out to local groups[232.53-236.16][S03] more than we had previously.[236.20-243.96][S03] So doing outreach to multifamily management groups, the schools,[245.26-249.96][S03] faith-based institutions, so some of the churches in town, various businesses.[250.00-254.06][S03] So continuing to try to get the word out.[254.10-261.13][S03] And we're also in the process of updating a poster that is more general in nature[261.16-266.86][S03] that we'll be disseminating around the community with the QR code[266.89-270.89][S03] just to kind of keep people like, hey, we've got a process going.[272.06-277.16][S03] And then we've been trying to do a lot of outreach as well with social media.[277.20-281.26][S03] So making sure, I don't know if you folks are all,[281.73-284.16][S03] I know Dineen is up on it.[285.06-286.96][S03] I see her, which is cool.[287.00-289.56][S03] I appreciate that, getting the word out.[289.60-293.76][S03] Just if somebody's missed something, then we're continuing to get the word out[293.80-299.36][S03] like, hey, you know, this is something that's going on, or you can comment on it.[299.39-301.66][S03] So I think that's very helpful.[303.33-308.96][S03] Also, this Wednesday evening is our comprehensive plan advisory group meeting.[309.00-313.13][S03] Our next meeting is on Wednesday.[314.06-321.06][S03] And then we're following that up with another meeting on November 1st,[321.10-325.56][S03] which seems kind of crazy, but we're trying to change the calendar around[326.00-331.69][S03] so we can get the comp plan advisory group meeting followed by planning commission[331.73-334.86][S03] so we can keep you guys informed about what's happening.[334.90-340.89][S03] And calendar-wise, that makes sense that way versus going the opposite direction[341.53-342.89][S03] that we were doing.[342.93-347.46][S03] We're also having a public open house in this room on November 13th,[348.86-353.36][S03] where it's kind of a several-fold effort that we're trying to do.[353.40-360.36][S03] So we have an environmental impact statement that's needing to get done.[361.26-367.16][S03] And there is public, what's called scoping, to get people's comments on what's contained[367.63-369.46][S03] in that environmental document.[369.50-373.26][S03] It's a big effort, but we need to do it for our update.[373.30-377.33][S03] It hasn't been done with the exception of Town Center in a number of years.[377.93-382.16][S03] So we'll be working on that to get comment from the public.[382.63-389.16][S03] Those materials will also go on the website for tracking what we're doing[389.20-391.16][S03] for the comp plan update.[391.50-398.26][S03] It will also include information from Fear and Peers,[398.30-401.00][S03] who's doing the transportation planning.[401.03-404.06][S03] And they'll have, there'll be multiple tables set up[404.66-408.06][S03] and opportunities to comment on different things by the public[408.10-412.69][S03] and then to ask questions by the different consultants and subconsultants,[412.73-415.96][S03] as well as Leland Consulting Group, who's another sub[416.96-423.16][S03] that will be providing information on housing and economic development.[423.66-429.06][S03] And then we'll be interweaving equity questions and inclusion[429.43-432.06][S03] throughout that tabling event.[432.10-439.93][S03] So quite a bit of different topics going on there that we're working on[440.33-442.66][S03] for that November 13th.[442.70-448.96][S03] So that's going to be kind of seven o'clock, our first really big push public-wise[450.36-452.86][S03] in a bigger format.[454.06-457.76][S01] I know you said, you said that the survey ends at the end of the month?[457.80-458.26][S03] Yes.[458.76-463.86][S01] And that the, it's now going to be in six languages, but I know[464.53-465.43][S03] It is currently.[465.46-466.06][S01] It's currently?[466.10-466.46][S03] Yeah.[466.86-471.56][S01] But was it six languages from the beginning, or was it just English and Spanish first?[471.86-474.16][S03] English and Spanish first, and then[474.20-478.76][S03] we've increased it to include the top six languages in the city.[478.86-481.36][S01] How long has the survey been available?[482.53-486.36][S03] I believe, Shannon, you can correct me,[486.40-489.06][S03] but I think it's been up at least the last two weeks,[489.10-490.86][S03] and it'll be up a couple more weeks.[491.56-494.36][S03] The thought is, is that we want to,[494.63-497.26][S03] it won't be the last thing that people can comment,[497.30-504.53][S03] and we will be providing more inclusive opportunity for all segments of the population[504.56-506.13][S03] to be included.[506.16-510.93][S03] So this is something we'll be doing with translating other documents as well as we go along.[511.10-512.66][S01] Okay, my, I was kind of getting,[512.70-514.63][S01] you know, where I was kind of thinking about is like,[514.66-518.06][S01] oh, if, you know, the English and Spanish versions were out like,[518.33-519.13][S01] you know, for[519.16-519.53][S03] Right.[519.56-522.26][S01] significantly longer, then that's not necessarily giving the,[522.56-523.73][S01] you know, those other households[523.76-524.10][S03] Sure.[524.13-526.33][S01] that maybe don't speak those languages, an opportunity[526.36-527.73][S01] to, one, become aware of it[527.86-528.06][S03] Yeah.[528.10-529.86][S01] and, two, feel even comfortable[530.53-530.86][S03] Right.[530.89-533.33][S01] surveying it, you know, participating in the survey.[533.36-536.26][S01] So I was just a little curious, you know, what,[536.30-540.29][S01] I guess the time difference between the two original translations[540.33-541.86][S01] versus everything else, you know, was it[541.90-542.53][S03] Right.[542.56-546.43][S01] are we, you know, we only talking like days, weeks, or months, so?[549.33-550.73][S03] Okay, did you have a question?[550.80-551.16][S03] Okay.[552.56-556.13][S03] So that's kind of those things.[557.13-561.86][S03] And then we'll be giving an update to the planning commission in November[562.00-569.93][S03] as well, just updating everyone on where we're at, what's going on with the comp plan update.[570.00-575.53][S03] And we'll be giving an update to City Council in December.[575.56-581.93][S03] So touching base with planning commission once a month in addition to the people[581.96-586.26][S03] that are on the advisory group, and then reaching out to council every two months.[586.29-590.06][S03] So effort is you're not seeing everything at the end.[590.10-593.56][S03] You're getting information as we're moving through the process.[594.00-603.33][S03] So hopefully that will be more inclusive as we go through the process to next December.[604.16-611.53][S03] Also wanted to share that Chair Batista was at the state planning conference in Spokane[611.66-614.96][S03] a couple weeks ago with members of the staff.[615.00-619.36][S03] I was there, or two associate, or I shouldn't say two associates,[619.40-625.66][S03] one associate planner, Sarah Pizzo, and our senior planner, Jonathan Morales,[626.56-633.13][S03] also went, that was the first time since I've been here that we took people together[633.16-635.26][S03] to the state planning conference.[635.29-639.63][S03] So it's been a long time, and it was, it was really good.[640.16-642.36][S03] It was a nice opportunity.[642.40-647.96][S03] There's a lot of new state law, a lot of requirements under the Growth Management Act[648.00-656.06][S03] that have changed regarding housing, vans, affordable housing, emergency housing,[656.36-660.53][S03] equity and inclusion, climate change.[661.26-666.16][S03] So there's a lot of, a lot of differences.[666.20-671.76][S03] And it was good to hear from jurisdictions around the state about some people[671.80-676.93][S03] that have gotten a jump on different things, how they are doing it[676.96-679.26][S03] and what their experiences are.[680.66-688.43][S03] So I think it was well worth the time and opportunity for us to go hear,[688.46-696.06][S03] hear those and kind of get re-energized about why we, why we do what we do as planners[697.33-703.76][S03] when we kind of get in the weeds sometimes to go see what, what good things other folks are doing[703.80-704.96][S03] around the state, so.[706.96-714.06][S03] And otherwise, we're still working on the Primera campus redevelopment[714.73-718.06][S03] currently, that's moving along.[718.10-724.33][S03] We have a street vacation across Kitty Corner Cross from the transit center[724.83-732.86][S03] with a pre-app that's in for a fourth building at Terrace Station being proposed.[732.90-738.26][S03] So we're reviewing the pre-application materials now.[739.53-743.13][S03] Still working on Sound Transit project[743.16-752.16][S03] and, you know, dotting i's and crossing t's and trying to get all of those permits[752.20-756.46][S03] closed out and conditions and inspections and permits.[756.50-761.86][S03] So that's kind of been a big challenge more recently.[763.53-765.06][S03] Trying to think what else.[766.46-773.93][S03] Forest Crest Athletic Club has a text amendment that's going to be rolling through to you folks.[774.16-777.33][S03] Some of you have seen it more than once through the years.[778.73-784.06][S03] And so that will be coming forward to you in a couple of meetings from now.[784.10-786.43][S03] I don't know if it's on the next agenda.[786.46-789.06][S03] I know the public hearing for the tree ordinances,[789.10-793.93][S03] but I want to say, Forest Crest might be coming to you, your next meeting[793.96-797.86][S03] on the 13th, but I[799.06-800.56][S01] Would that just be an introduction or?[800.60-802.56][S03] Yeah, just an introduction.[803.26-808.43][S03] And then that would require a public hearing with both the planning commission and city council.[809.33-813.06][S03] So those are kind of the big things coming up.[813.73-818.86][S03] Anybody have any questions about anything that's going on?[819.26-821.93][S05] I keep waiting for 66 to get shut down.[821.96-824.66][S03] Oh, yeah, you and all of us too.[826.43-830.33][S03] I'm like, that road has been a disaster for so long.[831.86-839.73][S03] And yeah, there's a little bit of worry if that is going to happen due to fighting the weather[841.16-844.46][S03] as well, and getting somebody out there to get that going.[844.50-852.06][S03] So same thing, gets too cold, you can't do the construction and all of that good business.[852.10-853.53][S03] So, you know.[854.33-859.56][S01] Which I don't get on 66 very often, what specifically is going to be?[859.86-863.36][S03] Repaving the road surface.[863.40-868.16][S03] It's really alligatored, and it's been in poor shape.[868.73-872.26][S03] So there were waterline improvements that were done earlier.[872.30-879.13][S03] And so the utility portion was done, but not the surfacing and resurfacing of that road.[879.16-882.06][S01] Is it, is it like an actual repave repave?[882.10-885.86][S01] Or is it just kind of like a scrape and chip seal type of situation?[885.90-888.46][S03] No, I think it's repaving as far as I know.[888.50-888.96][S01] Okay.[889.73-892.66][S03] But don't, yeah, don't quote me on that.[893.46-894.56][S03] But I think it is.[894.60-897.76][S03] I mean, the, the street's in bad shape.[897.80-904.93][S03] So a lot of times when they get that bad, it's a lot more work to improve them than otherwise.[905.00-907.66][S03] You're not just out there kind of, you know.[907.70-911.33][S01] Is this closer to 220th, or is this like a really long stretch?[911.36-916.86][S03] It's 220th over to where they put the new pedestrian trail in[917.86-918.46][S03] section.[918.50-922.56][S03] Go over there and take a look at it, and you'll go k-k-k-k-k-k with your car.[922.66-923.76][S03] I was on it today.[923.80-927.33][S05] One of the streets that borders Primera Blue Cross, that's why.[927.36-929.46][S03] Yeah, you'll, oh, I'm on the right road.[929.50-929.86][S01] Yeah.[930.53-936.26][S03] Yeah, one of kind of many streets that people are like, come on![937.00-940.73][S03] But yeah, it's been, we were over at the old city hall,[940.76-943.56][S03] so I would use that street a lot back in the day.[943.60-946.96][S03] And it has not improved over time, let's just say, so.[947.53-950.86][S06] Was that where they're going to improve the interurban bike path?[950.89-957.53][S03] Yeah, it goes from 220th to the new bike path crossing that's right there.[957.56-959.36][S03] So that section.[959.66-962.16][S05] The part that made me, gave me pause is that[962.46-967.06][S05] now the initial report says it was going to be going through it for a year.[967.86-968.26][S01] Oh.[968.30-968.86][S03] Wow.[969.20-970.46][S05] I'm like, a whole year?[970.53-973.13][S03] Yeah, I don't think the repaving portion is[973.16-979.96][S03] that, that, again, the worst part should be over when they were digging everything up.[980.00-980.66][S03] It's[981.26-981.86][S03] Yeah.[982.13-985.73][S03] It's on the downhill slide, but yeah, so.[986.66-987.73][S01] Okay, interesting.[988.00-989.53][S01] It's funny when you said old city hall,[989.66-990.86][S01] it tells you how long I've been around when[990.90-991.36][S03] Oh, yeah.[991.40-993.13][S05] The old, the new, like that.[993.16-996.86][S01] I think of the, the original city hall that was old.[997.33-998.66][S01] And it had ceilings collapsing on it.[998.70-1000.33][S03] It's the old city hall in me, yeah.[1000.66-1001.26][S03] You know.[1001.30-1002.56][S01] Not the interim city hall, which[1002.60-1004.66][S03] The former interim one[1004.70-1007.46][S03] that was interim for 12 years.[1007.50-1008.26][S03] Yeah, that one.[1008.30-1009.26][S01] Can't believe it's been that long.[1009.46-1010.06][S03] I know.[1010.16-1011.73][S01] So I do have a question.[1011.76-1017.36][S01] I'm glad you brought it up because I saw it on council's agenda for vacating right-of-way[1017.40-1020.26][S01] for the fourth building.[1020.30-1020.73][S03] Right.[1021.53-1024.06][S01] So I'm glad you brought, you brought that up because I was going to bring that up.[1025.26-1029.33][S01] Did, I'm assuming the council voted to vacate?[1029.56-1031.13][S03] They haven't had their public hearing.[1031.16-1031.66][S01] Oh, it's not yet?[1031.70-1033.16][S01] Okay, I thought, I thought the meeting already happened.[1033.20-1038.33][S03] Yeah, so they had a work session on the proposed vacation.[1038.83-1044.86][S03] And we get outside counsel on these street vacations from Kenan Williams.[1044.90-1051.66][S03] He's an attorney that is a mastermind for all things streets.[1052.13-1059.06][S03] And so he's, just make sure that the appraisal's correct, that everything's in line.[1059.13-1061.46][S01] And I read the response to the report,[1061.50-1064.06][S01] and they, it was like $400 and some thousand or whatever.[1064.10-1064.53][S03] Yeah.[1064.56-1065.86][S01] They said that[1065.90-1067.06][S01] that lined up with market value, so they[1067.26-1068.06][S03] Yeah.[1068.09-1070.06][S03] So making sure that's all correct.[1070.10-1078.13][S03] And then that's a limited access from Washington State Department of Transportation.[1078.46-1084.56][S03] So anytime you come off like a highway system, state road,[1084.66-1090.13][S03] the, the state keeps property, what they call limited access,[1090.16-1099.73][S03] to make sure that there's limited cuts and intersections close to where you're coming off[1100.33-1104.13][S03] as a state improvement or federal improvement.[1105.16-1114.46][S03] And so working with the state to make sure that they're in line with how, what's being proposed.[1114.50-1120.26][S03] So that development is not going to be able to access off of 236.[1120.30-1123.16][S03] It's too close to the Van Rye Boulevard intersection.[1123.73-1127.93][S03] Or in proximity to that intersection, there are standards there.[1128.00-1131.86][S03] And that's just to make sure they're safe ingress egress.[1131.90-1136.06][S03] So people are not just here, there, and everywhere turning out.[1136.66-1138.96][S01] I think we can already, you know, you already see the effects[1139.00-1142.86][S01] of having a new Van Rye so close to the off-ramp there.[1142.90-1144.86][S01] It's like you got a stoplight, and then a couple more feet[1144.90-1145.80][S01] and another stoplight.[1145.83-1146.20-1147.73][S01] And it's like, I just need to get to the freeway![1147.76-1148.26][S03] Yeah.[1149.26-1151.56][S01] So, and I knew that that was going to be[1151.66-1152.26][S03] Right.[1152.36-1153.73][S03] But you don't want more.[1153.86-1154.26][S01] Yeah.[1154.30-1154.86][S01] You don't want more.[1154.90-1155.33][S03] Yeah.[1155.36-1158.93][S01] So that kind of brings, that kind of circles around to my actual question then[1158.96-1164.26][S01] because when we, when we originally zoned that, the old Evergreen Elementary site,[1164.63-1167.53][S01] we zoned it in the mind, it's like, hey, we want tall buildings there[1167.56-1168.93][S01] because we were thinking office.[1169.06-1169.56][S03] Right.[1170.63-1174.26][S01] So we allowed a lot taller buildings, but that's, that's what was,[1174.30-1174.66][S03] Right.[1174.70-1176.13][S01] you know, what we got is what we got.[1176.46-1183.33][S01] The, but the thought during that zoning process was never, at that time, was like,[1183.36-1186.96][S01] oh, wow, that, even that last house right there on the row could be wiped out,[1187.00-1188.63][S01] and that area could be developed too.[1188.66-1190.86][S01] I mean, and that's an amazing opportunity.[1190.96-1196.93][S01] But seeing how the other three buildings, you know, you know, very long, very linear[1197.33-1202.86][S01] front Van Rye, this fourth potential development site is different[1202.90-1207.96][S01] in the fact that it's going to be really directly facing the transit station.[1208.00-1211.56][S01] Now, obviously, we don't want to have the access off of 236.[1211.59-1212.26][S03] Right, right.[1212.30-1217.16][S01] But in terms of building design, I don't even know if our code covers it right now,[1217.20-1223.33][S01] but would, would they be encouraged to still have that, the, the primary face of that building[1223.96-1229.66][S01] be more presenting to 236 as opposed to Van Rye?[1229.73-1233.33][S01] I asked that also, knowing that there's quite an elevation change there.[1233.36-1233.86][S03] There is.[1233.90-1234.33][S03] Yeah.[1234.36-1235.93][S01] I'm like, how, you know?[1236.33-1238.73][S03] It's going to be tricky to develop that site.[1239.96-1248.26][S03] So as part of the subdivision and development agreement for[1248.30-1257.33][S03] Terrace Station, which was Gateway, there was preservation for a, basically a channelized stream[1257.36-1260.06][S03] coming through there, wetland mitigation.[1260.33-1262.86][S03] There's a bunch of easements through there.[1263.56-1265.96][S03] It's not what we call clean.[1267.73-1276.96][S03] It's old development that was done when people neglected to put utilities in the street.[1277.00-1282.36][S03] I mean, granted, there wasn't really a street there, but kind of not in the best shape.[1282.40-1287.73][S03] And so there's a lot of work that needs to be done to kind of correct that site[1287.76-1289.66][S03] to make it available for development.[1289.93-1294.86][S03] So right now, pre-app wise, they're kind of facing the building to the corner.[1295.53-1301.46][S03] So if you're looking from the entrance, you would be kind of,[1301.50-1304.06][S03] I'd be looking right at the transit center.[1304.16-1305.26][S03] Like this, kind of.[1306.33-1306.86][S01] So, so[1306.96-1308.46][S03] Kitty corner across the street.[1308.50-1313.53][S01] So there, there would still be, you know, the, I guess for pedestrian traffic[1313.56-1313.86][S03] Right.[1313.90-1315.56][S01] vehicle traffic.[1315.60-1317.93][S01] You're literally, you're looking across from the transit center,[1317.96-1320.66][S01] and you see the building, you see the entrance, you see, you know.[1320.86-1321.33][S03] Yeah.[1321.36-1323.56][S01] It's not like you're seeing the backside of the building[1323.60-1323.86][S03] Correct.[1323.90-1326.33][S01] and you got to go all the way down the hill to really access it.[1326.36-1326.73][S03] No, no.[1326.76-1327.33][S01] Okay, that was my concern.[1327.36-1329.26][S01] You have more than one entrance to the building, but[1329.30-1329.86][S03] Yeah.[1329.90-1334.06][S01] design-wise, how, how does it present to what we're trying to[1334.10-1334.93][S03] We're just[1334.96-1335.53][S03] have developed on[1335.56-1339.16][S03] Yeah, we're just seeing it, but it would be facing that corner,[1339.20-1342.73][S03] and then parking would be from the rear,[1342.93-1349.26][S03] which is where most, where all the other parking is from the other buildings, so to speak.[1349.46-1354.46][S01] Again, have, never really thinking that this would be possible,[1354.50-1356.46][S01] this little patch would be possible to develop.[1356.50-1358.26][S01] Again, something else that we didn't think about.[1358.30-1362.13][S01] So now, across the street on Van Rye, we have our public plaza.[1364.06-1368.56][S01] Is there a way, if we wanted to sort of mirror that on the other side,[1368.60-1371.00][S01] you know, create, you know, kind of double the plaza space?[1371.03-1373.13][S01] Now, granted, it would be on their property.[1373.16-1378.96][S01] But like, is there, I guess, design-wise, is that, would that be even something[1379.00-1381.53][S01] that'd be feasible that they would be willing to do?[1381.56-1385.13][S01] Or, I don't know, you don't, you don't pay the money to acquire the land[1385.16-1387.53][S01] if you don't, if you're not going to develop it, you know.[1387.66-1388.26][S03] Right.[1388.30-1389.86][S01] Otherwise, just leave it as open space.[1389.90-1394.36][S03] So they preliminarily have kind of a plaza coming into the entrance,[1394.40-1400.86][S03] but it's more designed right now for the building versus a public space,[1400.90-1405.13][S03] which is what's intended on the other side where the city would be developing that.[1405.16-1406.86][S01] And there's plenty of, you know, there's plenty of,[1408.13-1411.66][S01] you know, private pl, private plazas for public use or[1411.70-1411.93][S03] Right.[1411.96-1415.66][S01] even if it's not for public use, the fact that it's, it's open space[1415.70-1416.26][S03] Right.[1416.30-1417.16][S01] is still something.[1417.20-1417.73][S03] Yeah.[1417.76-1418.26][S01] So, okay.[1418.60-1418.96][S03] Yeah.[1419.00-1420.53][S01] It's, it's interesting.[1420.66-1424.33][S03] It'll be a work in progress, you know, as in all these things.[1425.86-1431.93][S03] We, we did a lot of work to get the buildings as they are right now.[1432.86-1434.73][S03] So people could be like, ugh![1434.76-1441.33][S03] But there was a lot of effort put in to work on the design of all those three buildings,[1441.40-1443.26][S03] to the point we could code-wise.[1443.96-1451.26][S01] Will that building, that, that fourth building then still have a requirement for ground floor commercial?[1451.96-1456.33][S03] It does not, although they do, because it's in TC-1.[1456.36-1459.06][S03] So they can have commercial or residential.[1459.46-1463.13][S03] They do have some commercial space on, in that building.[1464.00-1468.73][S01] I would, I mean, I would just say, you know, literally steps from the transit center,[1468.76-1471.53][S01] it would be a lost opportunity[1471.56-1472.66][S01] not to have something[1472.70-1473.53][S03] I agree.[1473.56-1474.66][S01] like that there, wow, okay.[1474.70-1475.16][S03] Yeah.[1475.80-1477.26][S01] Yeah, that'll, that'll be interesting.[1477.53-1481.13][S01] To say, when, I know this is very early on in the process,[1482.26-1488.93][S01] roughly ballpark guesstimation, when do you think we, there would be enough,[1488.96-1493.26][S01] or it would be in a situation where we could at least learn more about it?[1493.30-1495.96][S01] Or at least get in a, see what, what they're proposing?[1496.00-1498.66][S01] And I know it's not something that we're going to be voting on or coming for.[1498.70-1499.86][S01] I'm just curious.[1499.90-1505.46][S03] Yeah, so anytime we have information, it's public information once we receive[1505.50-1506.36][S03] an application.[1506.40-1506.86][S01] Okay.[1506.90-1511.66][S03] So, I mean, even their pre-apps, public, anybody can request that.[1512.00-1517.86][S03] I would just say typically, a development's going to morph after we do a pre-app[1517.90-1520.73][S03] and have all of our comments to an applicant,[1521.06-1526.66][S03] and then working through that until we actually have, you know, a site plan in hand[1526.70-1528.56][S03] and all those other things worked out.[1529.16-1533.93][S03] So I would wait until, you know, a complete application came in,[1533.96-1536.26][S03] and you guys can ask me as we go along.[1536.30-1539.33][S03] I would imagine that's probably a few months away.[1539.53-1542.53][S01] Okay, and it's the same developer that did the[1542.60-1544.86][S03] Yeah, Sierra Construction would be.[1544.90-1553.86][S03] So Sierra built the three buildings, two of those three buildings are Lake Union Partnership[1554.73-1558.73][S03] who did building one and two, and then Sierra did building three.[1559.00-1561.93][S03] Sierra is also proposing this fourth building.[1561.96-1565.26][S03] So what you see getting built now, I'm saying one, two, and three[1565.30-1567.26][S03] like you guys know what I'm talking about.[1567.33-1568.06][S03] Sorry.[1569.40-1572.13][S01] Refer to it as the building that the gym was supposed to go into.[1572.46-1574.33][S01] The building that has the pizza place.[1574.36-1574.40][S01] And then the one[1574.43-1575.93][S01] that's still under construction.[1575.96-1577.86][S03] And the one under construction's three.[1577.90-1580.96][S03] So that's their building, Sierra specifically.[1581.00-1584.06][S03] But they've constructed all of the buildings down there.[1584.36-1586.86][S01] Well, I don't know who the, what entity brought it for,[1586.90-1588.93][S01] but especially when one and two were being built,[1589.20-1592.73][S01] they actually came with their plans, just as an FYI[1592.76-1593.13][S03] Yeah.[1593.16-1595.36][S01] to show us, and it was, I think it was just, you know, informal,[1595.40-1599.53][S01] like after the meeting, you know, we're, you know, that was our really first opportunity[1599.86-1603.26][S01] to see it, and it was kind of a surprise to a lot of the planning commission[1603.30-1607.13][S01] because what we had zoned this area for, and then, you know, what ended up being[1607.16-1609.53][S01] it's like, well, that's completely different.[1610.56-1613.26][S01] Okay, but, you know, that was back when we thought, ooh,[1614.26-1619.13][S01] having employment center right next to a light rail station, perfect concept,[1620.13-1621.86][S01] pre-COVID, work from home totally.[1621.90-1622.93][S03] Right, right, right.[1623.00-1624.86][S01] All that, all that, all that other kind of stuff.[1624.90-1629.66][S01] And then, again, there was a fear is that with all these residential units being put[1630.06-1632.73][S01] on the old Evergreen site with more commercial,[1632.76-1637.53][S01] that it was going to be cannibalizing what we wanted to have in the actual core of the Town Center as well.[1637.56-1637.93][S03] Yeah.[1637.96-1641.53][S01] And we, we may still feel those effects for a while, so it's[1641.56-1642.13][S03] Yeah.[1642.86-1644.73][S03] We want to try to contain that.[1644.76-1648.93][S03] So we're growing from Town Center out.[1649.00-1651.13][S03] But, yeah, so[1651.66-1654.46][S03] sometimes we rezone everything.[1654.50-1662.06][S03] And then, yeah, it kind of cannibalizes what, you know, trying to get a strong, robust Town Center,[1662.36-1670.26][S03] which is the first objective, to rebuild Town Center and, and then go from there, but.[1671.33-1675.26][S01] Okay, does anybody else have any questions or comments for the director's report?[1676.26-1678.06][S01] Nope, not hearing or seeing anything?[1678.10-1681.66][S01] Okay, so normally that would have been, so, well, actually, we can do this.[1681.73-1686.53][S01] So we got miscellaneous call by planning commissioners for item number seven.[1686.66-1691.13][S01] Does anybody have any miscellaneous business, any known absences coming up?[1692.60-1693.93][S01] Not hearing or seeing any?[1693.96-1696.73][S01] Okay, so we kind of defer this to the end.[1697.26-1701.36][S01] Anybody want to make a motion to excuse our two commissioners tonight?[1701.40-1702.93][S01] Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Betcher.[1703.00-1705.26][S01] I'm pretty sure we already excused one of them[1706.06-1706.93][S01] for tonight.[1707.00-1708.13][S03] Oh, for tonight?[1708.16-1708.46][S01] I thought it was[1708.50-1710.06][S07] For tonight, it was Commissioner Betcher.[1710.10-1713.96][S01] It was, okay, because I didn't see it in the minutes, but I know he had said something.[1714.00-1716.86][S01] So do we just want to play it safe and put both of them in there?[1717.26-1719.86][S01] Just even if we're doing it over again, you know, for one of them?[1721.86-1723.46][S01] I'm willing to entertain a motion.[1724.30-1727.66][S05] I'd like to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Betcher[1727.70-1730.13][S05] and Commissioner Morgan from tonight's meeting.[1730.20-1732.46][S01] All right, I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Betcher[1732.50-1734.06][S01] and Commissioner Morgan from tonight's meeting.[1734.26-1735.06][S01] Do I have a second?[1736.26-1737.06][S08] A second?[1737.10-1738.33][S01] I have a motion and a second.[1738.36-1739.33][S01] All in favor, say aye.[1740.13-1740.56][S09] Aye.[1740.60-1741.13][S10] Aye.[1741.56-1742.13][S01] Opposed?[1743.00-1744.33][S01] Hearing none, that motion carries.[1744.36-1744.93][S01] Thank you.[1745.56-1748.06][S01] And so with that, with no other miscellaneous business,[1748.10-1749.46][S01] I'll go ahead and declare this meeting adjourned.[1749.50-1750.33][S01] Thank you very much, everyone.[1750.36-1751.13][S03] Thank you.[1752.86-1753.86][S03] Thanks, everyone.[1755.56-1757.13][S03] Hopefully you'll get your house painted.[1757.16-1760.13][1760.16]